All right, welcome ladies and gentlemen. That scared me. They asked me to pound it harder this time, and that was really hard. Welcome ladies and gentlemen to the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting, first here at the Clackamas County Fair. We have some interesting things for you to watch on TV later on. This is live right now, but it won't be when you view it. We've got a decent audience today, so I'd like Mr. Krupp to please take the roll call.
All right, well, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. Are we... All right. Can you hear me all right?
Yeah.
All right. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. It's a beautiful day here at the Clackamas County Fair. And so, roll call. Commissioner Bernard.
Here in Canby.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Chair Ludlow.
Here. Ladies and gentlemen, would you please rise. The colors will be posted today by VFW Post 1324, Tri-Cities, and they are number one in their division for community service. Please recite with me the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Thank you, VFW. All right, we have some presentations today. I'd like to welcome Mayor Brian Hotson of the city of Canby. Brian?
Hello, sir.
Oh, there you are.
They put me up here at the big table.
All right.
I just wanted to thank you, Chairman Ludlow, and the rest of the county commissioners for hosting your meeting here today at the Clackamas County Fairgrounds. We really do appreciate it. And to everyone that's here, thank you for coming. Please ask these guys really tough questions and make it interesting for them. And we really do appreciate all that Lori and her team do here at the fairgrounds and the event center. And when you're done with the fair today, please don't hesitate to spend some more time in Canby. We've got a lot of great events coming up, and we really do appreciate all of you being here, as well as the Commission. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Hotson. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much for coming, Brian.
Yeah. All right. Next speaker I'd like to welcome is the fair director, Lori Bothwell. And I must say, the staff, her staff, and all the volunteers here are fantastic. They put together this really great stage today and gave us all an opportunity to come to the fair for a reason.
Well, good morning. It's a pleasure to welcome each of you to the county fair. This week, over 140,000 guests will enjoy the fair. 11,647 ribbons will be awarded to 4-H, FFA, and open class exhibitors. 10,120 corn dogs will be consumed, and 600,000 feet of toilet paper will be used, which is the same distance if you were to drive from Canby to Government Camp and back to Oregon City. The fair is the only annual county-wide event that brings us all together. It's a place where we can go and meet our neighbors, showcase our talents, see new and interesting things, and have a lot of fun doing it. Thank you for being part of it today. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Lori. You're a great hostess.
Thank you.
All right. Because it's, this is an agricultural county, and certainly have great animal husbandry. Next presentation is from Clackamas County 4-H Group. Becky Syntec, livestock judging coach, will show you how the judging is done. Or tell you, I should say.
Hi there. We have been livestock judging in Clackamas County probably forever, but I've probably been working with the teams for the last 15 to 17 or so years. Anyway, we have had some absolutely fabulous kids over the years. We've been really, really trying for years to go ahead and win a national, go on to a national competition. We did an FFA from the Sandy area a few years ago. Never have won the 4-H one until this year. So, we did, the kids did super awesome. They're going to Louisville, Kentucky in November for the National Livestock Exposition, and will have the chance to judge. Also, our intermediate team, they were reserve champion as well. So, we did super awesome. I would like to introduce a couple of the team members. This is Connor McCabe, over here by the microphone, Connor.
Up by the mic.
Okay. And Cody Wofford. We have Jacob Johnson and Trinity Rodriguez, who are also on our team. Jacob is participating in contests this morning, and Trinity is also. So, sad to not have them. I will just tell you that livestock judging, really, the reason that we have kids do that is not necessarily that they're going to go out in the world and be livestock judges themselves at some point in time, but the idea is that they learn, given a set of educational things...
I'm gonna gavel that thing down. Oh, I'm sorry. I just messed it up.
Anyway.
I thought that was last caller.
They learn some things, and based on a set of knowledge, they go ahead and make a decision and defend that decision. So, I would like for Cody to go ahead and give you a really brief thing about how you judge sheep, and then I'm going to have them give a set of oral reasons. Cody, use the microphone, and Connor, use the microphone. Just turn it around. Oh. There we go.
All right. When you're evaluating lambs, it's really important to start at the top and work your way back. So, what you want to do is, you want to evaluate them from a distance first, and then start placing the class in your mind based on what you see, and then when you get the chance to handle the animals, you want to adjust your placing based on what you feel. So, when we're looking at these two lambs here, we can see that there's a definite size difference, and that comes into play when you're going to make your decision in the contest. As we can see, this one here on my left is a much larger lamb. Obviously, it has more product behind it. That gives it an advantage in the contest. Now, when we go to handle these lambs, my assumption is that this lamb is going to handle firmer down his top line, he's going to be wider, and he's going to just be an overall better lamb. Now, when you're handling them, you want to handle down the rack, which is right here, and then down the rest of the back to the loin, and then handle the stifle, which is the leg muscle in the back. And you want the lamb that is the biggest, the squarest, the heaviest muscled in the class. Another thing you look for in lambs is the amount of condition or fat that they have, and you feel for that right here in the middle of their rib, towards the front of their rib After you've evaluated the lambs, you go ahead and just make your decision based on what you see. Always value pounds of product, which is the amount of muscling that they have. Between these two, I would easily go with this lamb right here. It's just a far heavier muscled, far more pounds of product, far more economical lamb.
Do you want to go ahead and start your oral reasons, then?
I like the market lambs, one, two, three, four, and identified my class winner as being the heaviest muscled and handling the squarest down his top line. Ideally, I would like to stretch my class winner out along his profile and up through his neck. However, that is being very critical of an easy class winner. In my top comparison, I selected one over two, as it is by far wider from stifle to stifle, and handles more correct in the amount of finish. I would have to grant that the two lamb is long-bodied and smoothing its overall profile, however, gives up just a little bit too much width along the top line to place any higher in the class.
Wow.
Connor? Finish.
In my intermediate comparison, I still prefer the two lamb. It is longer from its 13th rib back and is a touch deeper in its twist. Sure, I do grant that the number three lamb should be cracked over wider through his chest floor and may cut a larger eye, however, he will simply yield less pounds of product. Therefore, I place him in third. And finally, in my final comparison, I still like three over four, prefer the lamb who is more extended on a profile view. Sure, the four lamb may be leveled down his top line and have good frame size, however, he is the narrowest, lightest muscled, and also the narrowest tracking lamb in the class. Therefore, he's last.
So, we're getting ready to go to Louisville. We're kind of in a fundraising sort of mode. We had the opportunity to sell water a couple of times during the week before the fair really opened. And so, anyway, if anybody wants to contribute, we'd be totally thrilled. How's that?
Becky, how do you get the, how do you get the animals to Kentucky?
Oh, we don't take animals to Kentucky. We take kids to Kentucky. And what we do is, we will take the kids to Kentucky, the team, and we will go around some places in Kentucky and do some judging before we actually go into the contest, just kind of as a, you know, a prep. Connor's going off to Cornell University this year. Cody is a high school senior. He will intend to go into a law field. Jacob Johnson is going to go into pre-vet. He will be livestock judging at Lynn Benton this year. And then Trinity's a freshman. So, anyway, we think our kids, you know, the opportunity to learn how to express yourself has been, you know, beneficial to them.
Commissioner Schrader and Commissioner Savis.
Just had a quick question about the lambs. They look like Hamsters. What's their breed?
Both of these lambs are crossbred ewe lambs, which means they have a mix of breeds in them. Most likely, it is...
Pardon me? Go ahead.
Both of these lambs are crossbred lambs, most likely between Hampshire and Suffolk.
Okay.
This lamb here, because of all the leg wool he has, because of just the meaty nature and the compact nature of his body type, he's very Hampshire appearing. This other lamb over here, he's a little bit cleaner in his front legs, but he also has a wool cap, some wool on his back legs. He's a smaller, lower-to-the-ground type of lamb, so he also has a lot of Hampshire influence.
Good, that's my guess. And I've just got to congratulate the young fellow. Great job, gentlemen, that's going to Cornell. I'm a graduate of the Cornell College of Agriculture and Life Sciences. I'm assuming that's where you're going. It's one of the best ex schools in the country, and congratulations. Glad you'll come see me after you graduate, because we'll both be alumni. Okay.
Commissioner Savis?
I just had one question, and that is, do they get extra points for public speaking?
Yeah. They do. Absolutely. That's why I had them do their oral reasons, because we work really hard at the oral reasons. You know, you have to know how to judge livestock, but the oral reasons are an extraordinarily big part of the contest. They will give probably four or five sets of oral reasons at their national contest. It is a big deal.
I appreciate that they both spoke well, but I think Commissioner was talking about the sheep.
Both, thank you. My follow-up question, how about the livestock itself in public speaking?
Great.
All right. Thank you very much. And Connor and Cody, good luck to you. Thank you very much. All right. Our next presentation will be "The Road Ahead: Clackamas County's Road Maintenance Outlook." Barb Cartmel, the Director of Transportation and Development, will give that presentation. Barbara?
Hi, good morning. Trying to get a view of the stage here, because I've got some goodies for you guys.
You can't, you gotta use a microphone somehow here.
Yeah, I'll bring it there, and here's our current brochure.
We're getting some promo stuff here.
Barb, I can pass that out for all the stress you folks deal with daily.
Barb, why don't you go to the microphone?
Okay. There we go. This is great.
I want the tire. What is that tire?
That tire's nice. Here you go.
Oh, boy.
Get back to my microphone here. Thank you very much. I was just sharing with you some of the new, very, very budget-wise promotional material that we have brought for this second phase that I'm going to introduce into our outreach. The new pamphlet will be available at our booth. Anybody that's out there and can see, we're in the corner over here, the pavilion, giving out good information on the road ahead and the road funding gap issues that the Department of Transportation and Development is facing. The board has provided phenomenal leadership and direction on public outreach to help bring our citizens up to current information on what we're facing every day. We've got the new brochure. There's a video loop that's going to be running all day. The new pull-ups are back here that show what the, how important the roads really are to our configuration and getting around and moving freight and moving our people and the safety and the number of issues that face us every day. We have a new webpage that is out and up live right now, and that is, again, on the handout. It's just theroadahead.us, I think. This next steps that we're moving forward in the process, we've just finished six months of outreach, as you're well aware. We've been keeping you apprised of the progress on that, and we're reaching out into the next six months, doing additional outreach, hoping to capitalize this summer on some of the things that are going on, like being here at the fair. We're going to some farmers markets, hitting up some different types of venues that are active and out there right now. The next step we're also doing to help you as you make your decisions after we complete this next round of outreach and get some more survey work done, is some economic analysis that's going to let us know exactly what might be the best venue for our citizens to choose if they were to be kind enough to move ahead with this. We'll look at whether we include a list of roads, whether we look at the duration of any measure you might choose to put on a ballot, if we modify those collections over time, depending on what becomes available, and certainly, if you want to attach an audit. Those are some of the assumptions that might be done as part of that process. So, the time here mainly is to take the opportunity to let the folks know that we're over there as part of the fair presentation, and that we're there to give good information, and as much information as we can for them, and that we will be continuing this outreach into the next six months and be reporting to you every, every other month if they care to have an update on the progress we're making.
Thank you, Barbara. Any questions? All right.
And love following the lambs. Thought I was gonna follow a goat.
I've had to gavel down the lambs, gavel down the train. You're doing well out here today. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, it's time for citizens' communication. I have some cards here. Call up Bruce Ankerberg. You will have three minutes.
My name is Bruce, my name is Bruce Ankerberg. I represent, I am the chairman of the Oregon Confederation of Motorcycle Clubs. And a little history, last year, two gentlemen were not allowed entrance to the fair solely based on their attire. With the help of Kevin Phillips and the cooperation of the fair board, a policy has been changed. It now reads, no longer restrict entrance to the fair to individuals based solely on their attire. As the chairman of the Oregon Confederation of Motorcycle Clubs, I want to thank the Clackamas County Fair Board and the Event Center for recognizing the need for the change of this policy and making the change. In my position, I am committed to help resolve last year's matter regarding the violation to the two gentlemen who were denied access to the Clackamas County Fair last year solely based on their attire. Thank you, and thanks for putting on a great event. I enjoy this fair. I come here every year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
All right. The next person to speak is Wendy Hine. And followed by Caitlin Teetz.
Great. We'll get Caitlin ready. And this is Janice Searle. She's our horse fair superintendent. I asked her to come stand with me. Good morning. You know, if the extension office is the home to 4-H, then the event center's our school. We do so many things out here all year round, and we're so excited to have you here with us today. We have about 650 4-Hers who are showing this week at the county fair. We also had 240 at Horse Fair and about 40 more at the Dog Fair. I wanted to let you know, I know there was concern with the barns coming down. Everyone is very happy with the solution. We keep hearing all kinds of compliments about the T structures that are out here for the interim. Also, Horse Fair, I know, was a real concern. Barn demolition was still going on during Horse Fair, but thanks to just the enormous efforts of Lori and her staff, they managed to get us all set up out in the rodeo arena area, and it was wonderful. We've never had so many compliments about Horse Fair. People loved being outside. They loved the portable stall situation that Lori and her staff set up for us. So, we just wanted to let you know what a wonderful fair we're having, and I wish I had more 4-Hers here. They're all showing right now. So, after you're done, please wander around. I'd be happy to introduce you to 4-Hers and show you what they're doing on the grounds.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. And Caitlin Teetz?
Yeah, so, I'm Caitlin Teetz, and I'm a 4-H member. I've been a 4-H member for nine years, and I was part of the group that showed at Horse Fair, and I actually really enjoyed it this year. It was interesting going into it, because we weren't really sure what to expect, but it went really well. And it was more of a close-knit group of people, because everything was really centrally located, and it was really nice, because we could hear announcements. When we were in the barns previous years, it's harder to hear everything, and you don't really know what's going on. And also, I've been in and out of the beef barn this week for my brother, who's showing an FFA, and it's airy and nice, and it's not all stuffy and hot like it usually is. So, I just would like to say that I really enjoyed it.
Thank you, Caitlin.
Nice. Thank you.
Well, I'm sure one of the commissioners will very soon speak about the issue of the barn and any future barns that we really do need out here, because there has to be some, some private money donated in order to recreate the barns we really need out here and the event centers we really need for different activities. So, I appreciate that, all the testimony today, and we'll get to the consent agenda. I'll ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
Okay. Under Health, Housing, and Human Services, we have approval of an intergovernmental sub-recipient agreement with the city of Sandy, Sandy Senior Center and Community Center to provide social services for Clackamas County residents aged 60 and over. Approval of a revenue grant award with Care Oregon to increase dental access for underserved, the underserved community. Under the Department of Transportation and Development, a resolution declaring the public necessity and purpose of acquisition of right-of-ways and easements of the Tolbert Street 82nd Drive to Minuteman Way project, and authorizing negotiations and intimate domain actions. Approval of Amendment Number One to the Supplemental Project Agreement with Oregon Department of Transportation for the Salmon River Elk Park Road Bridge Project. And approval of a contract with North Santium Paving Company for the South Wilco Road Rock Creek Project. Under our Finance Department, we have approval of authorization to purchase radios and accessories for Motorola Solutions from Motorola Solutions. Under elected officials, we have approval of previous business meeting minutes. And approval of an authorization to purchase mobile data computers from CDW Government for the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. Under our Juvenile Department, we have approval of a grant award for funding shelter care beds for fiscal year 2013 Juvenile Accountability Block Grant. And approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas Education Service District to provide educational and vocational opportunities for the juvenile department. And under our Water Environment Services, approval of an agreement for a professional services contract between Clackamas County Service District Number One, Tri-City Service District, and Rich Wine Environmental, Inc., for process engineering and technical assistance. And that concludes the consent agenda.
All right. Do any of the commissioners wish to remove any item from the consent agenda? There being none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Schrader, seconded by Commissioner Bernard. Any further discussion or clarification needed? I'll ask the clerk to call the poll.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye. Passes 5-0. And now it's time for the county administrator update.
Well, Mr. Chair, there's a corn dog with my name on it out there, and so I'm gonna keep my remarks pretty short. One thing I did want to say is, is I hope you don't mind, I'm gonna put in a purchase order for some cocoa butter for both Mary and I, as we're sitting out here on the sunny side of the stage. Yeah. I've just got a couple of items here, and of course, the first, I just wanted to say, I mean, with the Clackamas County Fair in full swing, I just wanted to make mention that our own Office of Sustainability won a second-place award for the best tent display here at, here at the fair. We've got a number of booths here on display to provide information to the public, and I know that you all are going to be participating in a number of events here at the fair, so that ought to be a lot of fun. In fact, I saw Commissioner Bernard down here last night taking tickets for the rodeo on behalf of the Rotary Club here last night.
Me too.
Me too, yeah, and my wife, Susan. So, anyway, I just want to invite folks to come on out to the fair and learn why Clackamas County is such a great place to live, work, and play. The other item I had, I wanted to take a quick moment to recognize two citizens in Clackamas County, Mr. Ed Gronke and Mr. Richard Shook. Mr. Gronke was recently recognized by the Jennings Lodge CPO with the first-ever Outstanding Citizen Award, recognizing his many years of service to the community. And Mr. Shook was nominated by Tanya Burns from the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District for his contributions to the natural resources field for an award from the Oregon Recreation and Parks Association, and he's gonna receive that award officially on September the 10th. So, I just wanted to thank both Ed and Dick for their service to the county and congratulate them. And that's it.
Conclusion, all right. And now it's time for Commissioner Communication. I'll start with Commissioner Bernard.
I've been the liaison to the fair board for about six years now, and I'll tell you, it's great working with them. I have been lots of challenges. The barn was one of them. Built a long time ago with the help of a lot of citizens. The temporary tent, I think, is a really good way to get a good idea about what, what the potential is for future barn building. And you can sign up at Fred Meyer's, doing their reward program, and they will match the donation to the fair. And you also donate at the, at the entrance gate to build a barn. So, I hope you guys will all test, go to those tents and look at them and think about some ideas you might have for future buildings. And there's a lot of opportunities that the old buildings didn't allow, and that is concerts and things that you could do year-round that could raise money. The old building barely raised enough money to paint it. So, future buildings could make this convention, conference area, a convention center, and a great place for kids to continue their efforts in 4-H and make this a great place for Canby, too. So, I hope you all consider signing up with Fred Meyer's or donating at the door. Last night, I did do the rodeo, ticket-taking. It was a great rodeo. John Wayne was there, at least his voice was. And, you know, the participants worked really hard, and it looks pretty painful, and about $150,000 is awarded to the contestants, the winners. And so, be sure and buy a ticket and go to the rodeo. Other than that, I just, I actually just want to mention something personally. I moved to Canby just last week, and just outside of Canby, and look forward to learning more about the city of Canby. I've already tested out a few of the restaurants, since the kitchen is about six weeks away. And, and it is very nice. I love the fair so much, I had to move closer.
There you go.
So, enjoy the fair, and I look forward to seeing you around the rest of the week. Thank you.
Man, it is so rare when commissioners get applause, so just keep that coming, will you please? Commissioner Smith?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you hear me?
Can you hear me? Okay, good. Well, we participated, all commissioners, in the kiddies parade on Tuesday and then did the opening ceremonies, and it was a lot of fun, especially just throw the kids candy. But I got tomatoes, and, no, they were not thrown at me, but, so I saved them. Want to show it to you, a little girl was on the side and giving away her family's produce, so of course, I got tomatoes and she got a lot more candy. And it's always nice to do that and see all the kids. I recently have been down in Tillamook County at the fair. I spent two days Tillamook County Fair, and it, too, also is a very, very good fair. And I talked to a lot of the participants. I talked to the business owners who support it. I talked to the people who run the fair, and they do some unique things down in Tillamook County to make it prosperous. One of the things that I noticed and really dialed into is the private sector and community support offered by the businesses that are in the area, especially Tillamook Cheese, especially the farmers in the area who have tractors. And I don't think that the fair rents or provides any of their own equipment to do it because the farmers chip in and do it themselves. And I don't know if that's even possible. But it's going to take an effort from the community and the entire county if we want to see the possibility of a new digs being built. And I've always been the one to say, you can't always look to government for your solution. We're here to help and give an upward hand, certainly. But please be mindful that we are not the only solution. We are very open to hearing private sector solutions, how we can go out and fundraise, how we can do some fundraising events. Maybe there's some people in the community who would like to give large donations because they believe in the fair. I think the fair for our children coming up teaches lessons that they can't get in a university or a classroom or sitting in a chair. And I think we all saw that today with the, the lamb and the sheep participation. In Malala, where I come from, the FFA is a very big thing. The high school kids from Malala go back every year to Louisville, Kentucky, and they've often got first-place awards for their horse showmanship, for their cows, and more importantly, for their parliamentary procedures and public speaking. We have reigned high in that in the Malala area. So, there's a lot of things that the fair gives back to us if we're willing to just help each other and go along the way. So, bring us your comments, your concerns, and we'd be more than happy to listen to you. Thank you very much.
Eric, is that some form of applause, or did you want to ask a question?
No, Mr. Chair. I was going to suggest that these two individuals sitting in the sun here are going to be very hot, and they could certainly sit over here with the city attorney, or the county attorney and enjoy the...
You're such a generous man. Thank you, Eric.
I love the sunshine.
Yeah.
Maybe the gentleman could bring Mary and I a milkshake or something.
Oh, yeah.
There you go.
We've never had that happen. It had to be you, didn't it? Commissioner Schrader?
Well, it's great to be back here. As many of you know, this, the fair usually falls around my birthday, and there are times it's lucky enough where the opening day is actually my birthday, so I was lucky this year. And I want to thank everybody for all their well wishes for that, because it was a pleasure to open the fair on a special day for me. What also makes it special is I've been to this fair for over 30 years. I even won a blue ribbon for my honey a number of years ago when I was a beekeeper here in Canby. And all five of my kids grew up with this fair. And Tuesday, the Kitty Caper Day was the biggest day of the year for them because all the rides were half-price. So, we spent most of the day here. They weren't real interested in the, in the livestock yet. They wanted to do those rides first, so I'll never, never forget that. And the fun part for me is my little grandson is here from England, all the way from England. And with my daughter from the East Coast, my daughter from England, and the rest of the family, we're going to be taking him to the rodeo tonight. So, and I also bought him, he has some great cowboy hats over there. I got him a little cowboy hat, so he's going to be decked out. And we're going to make him an Oregonian even though he was born in England. You know, that's the way we're going to do it. Go Oregon. As far as some of the things I'd like to mention today as well, I am having an opportunity to speak at the VFW in Lake Oswego this afternoon. I know that Commissioner Smith and I continue to work very closely with our veterans, thanking them for their service, and I'm grateful I'm going to be able to do that after this event today at the fair, where we'll be continuing to work with the county to make sure, and I think Rick Rutherford is here today. He is our Veteran Service Officer. He is inside this building, and he is talking to veterans as they come up and ask him for information to help them get the benefits that they have earned for their service. So, if you're a veteran, make sure you see Rick Rutherford today for your help. Last comment, or last two comments, I want to remind people that the Oregon Heritage Commission has named this fair as a heritage event in the entire state of Oregon. And the reason they did it is because Canby is the epitome of small-town living. Brian C. Mayor Hodson nodding his head, and this fair really exemplifies what's the best, I think, that we have to offer here as a community and as a county and as a state. I did spend yesterday giving ice cream to seniors. It's one of the things I do every year, and I really enjoy that. And let me end by saying I have a little bit of a presentation to Chair Ludlow, and a reminder to everybody, I have a dear friend who's in the Pioneer Village. She kind of has what she calls a gourd, and people the other day were dropping off money for the barn. And so, if you go find her in the Pioneer Village, and I'll encourage you to go all the way around till you find her, I'm going to give Chair Ludlow the first, the first $15 in cash, okay? That we can start to get our barn rebuilt for the Clackamas County Fair. There you go, Chair Ludlow.
Thank you, Martha. I'll put that right there.
So, go find the gourd lady, okay?
Gourd lady, nice.
Here comes another corn dog for me.
There you go.
Commissioner Savis?
Well, thank you. You know, since I've been a commissioner for three and a half years, I think probably one of the most heartfelt appreciations I've come to realize and experience is our volunteers. And we have volunteers for our hamlets, our villages, our CPOs, citizen committees, veteran committees. But today, amongst a lot of volunteers who are actually making this fair happen, the rodeo, the fair, and making this a great event, I just want to acknowledge everyone, the fair board, the rodeo board, every, every volunteer out there, including the kids, for their great effort to make this the great fair that it is. And of course, the recent recognition as Commissioner Schrader shared. Little bit of, little bit of business, we talked about roads a little bit, but this morning at J-PAC, we did have a discussion regarding, from the congressman, Congressman Blumenauer, speaking to the J-PAC group, which is the Joint Policy Advisory Commission on Transportation. About a week ago, he held a forum at Portland State University, and it was a number of speakers. I attended the first two and a half hours of that event, and the two and a half hours was basically speakers and panelists from the private sector, from government, so forth, speaking on the needs for highways, the importance, the cost of society, basically with regard to congestion, a number of factors related to transportation. Of course, maintenance is also an issue. But today, at J-PAC, it had a little bit different flavor, that the congressman was speaking, and he's been, he has been a longtime advocate for rail, but light rail, heavy rail, all kinds of rail, streetcar, multi-modal transportation, bicycling, walking, so forth. So, but not much in the way of discussion of highways. And, and he's, he isn't working actively and working hard in Washington DC to promote more funding for the Highway Trust Fund. But I thought that, you know, it'd be great, and I shared, he had to leave early, but I shared with the group afterwards that how important it is to get the trust of the citizens that, to trust that we'll actually spend some of the Highway Trust Fund on actually highways. So, I use the word "trust" deliberately there. But we have to recognize that the payers of the system who are paying a gas tax should see a proportion of that money spent on, on roads and highways themselves. And I do know that there's a shortage, and I do know that there's a certain limit to what people can spend or afford to spend on, on taxes and fees and, and the like. So, I do know it are tough times, but the cost of fuel has increased the cost of highway maintenance and building highways and roads, but how incredibly important it is. And here we are in Canby, which sits on a substantial amount of employment lands that are frankly, you know, they're, they're, they're doing well, but they could be far more marketable if they had better highway access. And we are, the road to Interstate 5 is not very intuitive. It's very difficult to navigate over to I-5, and trucks have a hard time turning. And to the south, we have Highway 99E, which is limited in access for, for trucking. So, it's not that desirable, but yet, it's a great town, it's a great city with, with a great business area just to the, just to the east of here with some great employment lands. So, I want to congratulate Canby on really a lot of great urban renewal that they have done, projects in getting economic development, and I think is probably one of the more vibrant rural cities in Clackamas County. So, I want to congratulate the mayor and the city council and everyone who's been involved, past and present, in that effort. Thank you very much.
For the good of the order, a couple of quick things. Small grants. Every year, we budget to give out $200,000 to organizations, nonprofits, who will help the most vulnerable citizens of this county. The applications for this money and the distribution for same is due on August 15th, so just coming up here by 6:00 PM. For more information, please contact Caroline Hill at 503-655-8261, or email her at carolinehill@clackamas.us. Also, at our website, you will find a reference to that and additional information. On September 10th, we will have a town hall at Estacada, at Estacada City Hall from 7:00 to 8:30 PM, 475 Southeast Main Street, Estacada, hosted by the Estacada Chamber of Commerce. Be sure to come by and ask us all the questions you want. We'll try to get them answered on the spot. This last week, I was at the Boring and Dull Day where they serve free ice cream, on sugar cones, by the way. That was kind of great. Also, we were in the Kitty Caper Parade. You know, Tootie got tomatoes given to her, I got them thrown at me. The, also, Commissioner Bernard and I have enjoyed ferrying people around in golf carts, picking them up. I'll tell you, people really appreciate the ride to the fair, but they, they really appreciate when we take them back to their cars, because usually, they're kind of spent by that time. Ernie Hayes of the Commissioner's Office and I learned today what a cavie is. They're right behind you. It says rabbits and cavies. If you haven't seen a cavie or know what a cavie is, they are really cute. I think they're hamsters, but they're not, what are they? Yeah, of course, they're guinea pigs. I knew that. But some young lady explained to us the particular white mark in the forehead of some of them, and that's how they're judged, is by the fullness of that mark. I mean, fascinating stuff in the animal sections out here. We encourage everybody to come. You've only got now three and a half days now in order to come out and enjoy this great fair, for those of you watching on television. My favorite time is coming up, 4:00 PM on Sunday, I might add. It's the demolition derby in the same rodeo grounds now. They have a lawnmower demolition derby, which I think is fantastic stuff. You know, they only get brutal with those lawnmowers. And I want to finish up by saying something about roads like other commissioners have, and Barbara Cartmelt did the presentation on them. Just a synopsis again of the problem. We have 1,400 miles that we're responsible for. That's like driving from here to Mexico. 54% of our roads are in poor and fair condition. Now, especially considering the gentleman who came up before with the motorcycle clubs, if you've never driven a motorcycle before, I will guarantee you, you ride a motorcycle, and you will quickly recognize every divot in the road, and you are very sensitive to that. With a car, you know, you hit it, you go, man, you know, I wish those people would do something about that. But with a motorcycle, you better be watching, because some of those things feel pretty deep, and they can throw you awry, for sure. Ladies and gentlemen, I really appreciate those who've attended today. We appreciate those who took advantage of the free admission to the, to the fair this year until 10:00 AM. That's now over for the day, but we appreciate all the volunteers that make this possible, and really, all the volunteers that volunteer for anything in this county, and there's a great deal. If you look at the money savings that our volunteers give us on almost everything we do, it is something the government could never afford to do. I appreciate you all coming today and wish you a great day at the fair. There being no further business before this commission, this meeting is adjourned.